Like to call to order the regular meeting of the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury for Thursday, August 3, 2023. If you would take a moment to silence your cell phones. If there's any item that's on the agenda tonight that you wish to speak on, please fill out one of the blue slips you'll find there at the front of the room. Once you get it filled out, you can hand it to anyone here at the staff desk. If you would, please stand. We're going to have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Smith.
Every head bow, every eye close. Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, please give us wisdom and guidance to conduct business in your way. And also, Lord, send out a special blessing for the young kids that are starting school this week and next week. And all we ask in your name, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir, Mr. Edmond.
Here.
Mr. Andrew.
Here.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
Mr. Barti.
Here.
Vice President Gray is here. Mr. Berlin.
Here.
Mr. Guillory.
Yeah.
Mr. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Markantel.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Stelly.
Here.
Mr. Tremont.
Here.
And President Landry.
Here.
Everyone's present.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, item 1 is a public hearing to be held at 5:45. We'll come back to that. Item 2A, presentation of certificate to Ella K. And the recognition of winning world championship titles during the 2023 National Junior High School Rodeo and the National Little Bridges World Championships. Mr. Stelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start off by saying how proud I am of this young lady. This young lady. Of this young lady, who is the daughter of Brian and D N K. And she's from Iowa. So, Tom, if you'll roll that tape, we'll take a look at the event.
Ella K., Iowa, Louisiana, the 14-year-old eighth grader. 2022, she was the national all-around cowgirl. The reserve world champion goat tire. She won round number two with a 704. The 14-year-old eighth grader in her final national junior high finals, who is last year's reserve champion. She's not satisfied with being a reserve world champion. In her final national finals, she wants to win it all. Let's go, Louisiana.
I can hear.
Really is. Um, you know, I started out rodeoing. You weren't the kind. When I got out the gate, my career was over. So, we're very proud of this young lady.
Yes.
Again, she won the National Junior High School Rodeo Association Goat Tying World Champion for 23. And then also the National Little Bridges Rodeo Association Reserve World Champion. Girl Breakaway Rover and Goat Tire. So, we are very, very proud of this young lady. And I'm pretty sure we're going to see some more of you in the future, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you betcha. Do you want to say something to these guys? I wouldn't either. Again, congratulations to your family, to Grandma, to you.
Thank you.
So proud of you, baby.
Thank you.
Everybody give it up. So, presented by the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury on this Thursday of August 2023 to Ella K. In recognition and honor of winning world championship titles in goat tying, breakaway roping during the 2023 National Junior High School Rodeo and the National Little Bridges World Championships.
Thank you.
There you go. Let's get to it.
I should have already been down there.
Congratulations.
Mr. Barris?
Thanks, sir. Ella, I just want to say, congratulations. This is probably the start of many times that you not only be successful, but represent southwest Louisiana. And we've seen here in the past week, just this past week, we've had some good success up at Cheyenne and, you know, so with our local athletes, rodeo athletes. So, I hope you're ready to fill some shoes later on and represent us well. Best of luck.
Mr. Richard?
I'm an old horseman. I don't know about tying goats, but you can ride a horse.
Thank y'all. Okay, we're going to go to 2B. Receive report from staff regarding the police jury's redistricting outreach campaign. Mr. Booth?
So, the unthinkable just happened. Multiple times today, people made jokes and said, if I'm up here presenting and something happens, what's going to, on one of y'all's tablets, what are we going to do? And as I'm walking away over here, Mr. Stelly looks at me and says, hey, my tablet froze. Sorry, Mr. Stelly. Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening. With the upcoming October 14 election and the redrawing of the police jury district lines, we wanted to take a quick moment to educate the public on what we're doing and to let you guys know what kind of outreach plan we have to make sure the citizens know what district they're in when they go cast their ballot for police jury this fall. Just a quick recap, let you guys know where we are and how we got here. The police jury is required by law to redraw its district boundaries every 10 years following the U.S. Census. This is nothing new. It's to accommodate for population changes, things like that. So, in 2020, the U.S. Census Bureau conducted the census. And in April of '21, the states began receiving those population numbers. In May of 2022, the police jury began redistricting. We received a report from staff. And then about a month later, the police jury unanimously approved that redistricting plan. So, that's kind of how we got to where we are. Now, why is that, again, why is that important now? Because this fall at the October 14 election, residents will use the new police jury districts that are going to actually take effect January 1, 2024. But they're going to use the new district boundaries when they cast their vote. We need to make sure that the public knows that, the voters know that, when they go. And that way, they're not surprised when they end up in a new district. For example, I'm in a new district. I used to be in District 10, and I've been moved to District 1. So, I'm just one of those people that got affected by this. So, the sort of central hub for our outreach is we've designed a website, calcasue.gov/redistricting. It's a little different than our normal website. It's a standalone. It's a little bit different. It doesn't have quite as much content on it. It's sort of simplified. We sort of just tried to cram all the information for this one initiative onto this one page. Tom, if you have it pulled up, can you flop over to it real quick just so I can show them what it looks like? Again, it's a little simpler than our normal website. Maybe not? Okay, so again, it's calcasue.gov/redistricting. We made it quick. There it is. So, yeah, it's just a quick, easy page. There's not a lot of content on it. Again, it doesn't look quite as intimidating as a full-fledged website with links everywhere and banners everywhere. We just tried to keep it simpler. Thank you, Tom. You can go back. So, at the top of this site is a simple, interactive map. And that's what we're going to sort of try to send everybody to. I'd like to thank G I S for helping us with that. They made a map for us. It's interactive. And we sort of stripped off all of those other layers that come with the G I S map. And this just has the 15 police jury districts. So, it should be very easy for people to find their address. It's interactive. They can scroll around. There's also a search bar so they can just look up their address if they choose. We're also going to have higher resolution graphics and images of each police jury district before and after. So, if people want to see where those district lines have changed, they can look that information up. We're going to have links to sample ballots, links to Go Vote, things like that. And then a timeline of important dates, not just the dates from the past, but also the upcoming election dates. Want to make sure the citizens stay informed and know when those dates are coming. And then lastly, we have supporting documents and videos. If somebody wants to see the entire presentation that staff gave y'all back in April of 2022, that information is there as well. So, how are we going to get them out there? Obviously, we're going to use Seegov. We're going to broadcast public service announcements throughout all of election season. We are going to do something a little different. Technology is allowing us to do something more creative. We're going to put a QR code on the bottom of the Seegov channel so that anybody watching it can just scan that code and it'll send them straight to that same website. That's a little different, and we're proud that we can start doing stuff like that. We're going to use social media. That's obviously where we get most of our public information out to now. We're going to begin an education campaign starting Monday. And then throughout election season, we'll continue to post graphics, informational videos, educational videos, things like that. We'll also contact local media and ask them to provide coverage of all this information throughout election season. And we will share all of our content with them. So, they're welcome to use our links, our QR codes, and things like that. And then just to wrap it up, just want to throw the election timeline up there for the citizens at home that are watching. Again, early voting is in September, goes into October 7, excluding Sundays. Primary election is October 14, and the runoff is November 18. I encourage you and everyone at home to always follow us on social media. That's the quickest and easiest way to get information that we're putting out. And you can find us at calcasuegov. That's the easiest way. It's called our handle. That's how you find us. And I think that's all I got. If there's any questions?
Have any questions for Mr. Booth? Thank you, Mr. Booth.
I was trying to get y'all to the 5:45. I'm sorry.
You're good. 3A, adopt a resolution approving an act of donation agreement for the future Pino Noir Drive Drainage Project. Got a motion by Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3B, adopt a resolution approving an act of donation agreement for the Public Works East and West Side Paving Improvement Project. Got a motion by Mr. Tremont, second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3C, adopt a resolution approving an amendment to the Professional Engineering Design and Construction Monitoring Services Contract for the Niblets Bluff Road Bridge Replacement and Realign Alignment Project. Got a motion by Mr. Barris, second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3D, adopt a resolution approving the resubmitment of an application for fiscal year 2024-2025 capital outlay request for the gravity sewer trunk mains and pumping stations for South Ward 3 and South Ward 4 project. Got a motion by Mr. Tremont, second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3E, adopt a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement to utilize grant funds under the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program. Got a motion by Mr. Markantel, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 3F, adopt a resolution approving an amendment for emergency debris removal services related to the 2020 and 2021 disaster events. I have a motion by Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Richard. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Thank you, President. Exactly, what does that mean exactly? Are we going to amend it to what exactly? Are we going to be doing more or is basically going to?
I'll ask Ms. Fontenot.
Where we going to go? Ms. Fontenot, you're up.
So, on that particular one, we just need to clarify the terms of that. It's literally for the right of ways and the private property debris removal that we have left. So, we came into a little issue of wording clarification.
So, basically, just, I guess, changing of the actual agreement that's going on or will there be any kind of work done more? That's what I'm trying to find out.
So, the only work that we have on those particular activities are the private property debris removal. The right-of-way debris removal and the hazardous trees, those have come to an end. We just have to clarify that end of the term because we consider it to be ongoing until we finish the private property debris removal. And the state was questioning whether it was still effective.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fontenot. All right, is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
5:45, Mr. President.
Yeah, we're going to finish 3, and then we'll go back. We've only got like one more. 3H, adopt ordinances approving the purchase of the falling properties through funding from the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Number 1, 1486 Tomahawk Drive in Lake Charles, or actually Moss Bluff. Number 2, 839 Jay Cox Lane in Lake Charles. Number 3, 4725 East Greenfield Circle in Lake Charles. And number 4, 7196 Moss Lake Lane in Sulphur. Got a motion by Mr. Tremont, second by Mr. Hayes. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. President, can you go back to 3G?
We'll go back to.
I'm sorry.
Sir?
3G. We skipped 3G.
Oh, did we? Well, let's get that cleaned up. Oh, yeah, there's two of them. That's what happened. All right, 3G, adopt a resolution approving an amendment for emergency debris monitoring services related to the 2020-2021 disaster events, which is worded exactly like 3F. That's beyond me, but I guess there's two agreements. Okay, got a motion by Mr. Tremont, second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Now, we'll go back to number 1. Hold a public hearing at 5:45 PM. Audience had honors to show cause as to why the structures on the said properties should not be condemned. 1A, 547 Bozo Road in Moss Bluff.
Boom.
Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1A, 547 Bozo Road, Moss Bluff? Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Barris, to condemn and remove within 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1B.
Move on 1B.
876 Bozo Road, Moss Bluff. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1B, 876 Bozo Road, in Moss Bluff? Got a motion by Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Barris, to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1C, 1348 Park Road in Moss Bluff. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1C, 1348 Park Road, in Moss Bluff? Got a motion by Mr. Richard, second by Mr. Markantel, to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1D, is that where our speaker is? No, not till end. You got it. 1D, 6109 La J Road in Lake Charles.
Move on 1D.
Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1D, 6109 La J Road, in Lake Charles? Anyone in the audience here to speak on 1D, 6109 La J Road, in Lake Charles? Okay, got a motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Richard, to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1E, 2529 Stingray Road, Lake Charles. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1E, 2529 Stingray Road, in Lake Charles? Got a motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Richard, to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1F, 2331 Salmon Street, in Lake Charles?
Move on 1F.
Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1F, 2331 Salmon Street, in Lake Charles? Got a motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Richard, to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1G, 1112 Arcean Le Blue Road, in Lake Charles. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1G, 1112 Arcean Le Blue Road? Got a motion by Mr. Markantel, second by Mr. Richard, to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1H.
Wait, wait. I think she was wanting on 1G.
Are you here to speak on Arcean Le Blue Road? Okay, we don't have a blue slip. I'll allow you to speak. Go ahead and come to the microphone. That's what the... If anybody's here to speak on these condemnations, you're supposed to get a blue slip at the front of the room. You fill out the blue slip and turn it in to anyone here at the staff desk.
In the back by the officer.
Yeah. Okay, so you're here for our... We've already moved, and it's been condemned.
I was standing up waiting to talk.
Ma'am, but you... That's why we... I've said that twice before we ever got to... You have to fill this out. That way, we know you're here and that someone wants to speak on it. Well, I'm going to go ahead and let you speak. I mean, I'm sure these gentlemen don't have a problem with it. We'll just kind of act like it didn't happen and start over. So, if you would, you just need to state your name and address for the record and then tell us why it should not be condemned or explain your situation or what have you.
Okay. My name is Deborah Nash Dupre. My address is 9409 Gulf Highway, Lake Charles, 70607.
Okay, and you're the owner of the property?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, if you would, now just tell them why you think it should not be condemned.
Well, I'm trying to sell it. And my ex-husband now took my insurance savings and everything. He's in Mexico. So, I'm trying to get the money. Now, I do have somebody lined up to bush-haul. And I have it for sale by owner. So...
Okay, I think we'll have some questions for you. Mr. Andrew Pont?
Do you have a prospective buyer?
No, it's... I just put it for sale.
Thank you.
Sir? We are on 1G, 1112 Arcean Le Blue Road. Mr. Markantel?
Yes, ma'am. So, you're trying to sell the house?
And the land.
And you've had no offers since you've had it up for sale?
Just put it up for sale.
Mr. Stelly?
If the home is torn down and she doesn't pay that right away, it just goes under tax rule, right?
Right. We'll file a lien on the property.
Actually, I think we would be doing you a favor by getting it torn down. And then when you sell the property, which is going to be worth more with that thing off of it, then you're going to have to go back and pay what it costs to have the home removed. I mean, I think we'd be doing you a favor by having it torn down. Just, that's my personal opinion.
Okay. Is that expensive?
Well, it goes out for bid. It's... I'm sure it's not real cheap, but still and all, it's going to have to be done regardless.
Okay.
It's an unsafe structure.
I'm sorry.
It's an unsafe structure.
Yeah, and it's unsafe.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other questions for Ms. Dupre? Okay, so if the motion stands and it's condemned, you'll... You have an option to do it yourself. So, you would have to get in touch with a contractor or... And I don't know, Mr. Crane and our planning department, they may have a list of people that do that type of work. I mean, it would probably be cheaper for you to pay them, I would imagine, versus whenever we hire the people, whoever's the cheapest gets... Goes out for a public bid. And so, but we pay them, and then they'll send you the bill in the mail is what's going to happen. And then if it doesn't get paid, then it gets put as a tax lien against the property. And so, someday, the taxpayers get their money back, is what will happen. And then, of course, if you, like Mr. Stelly said, if you sell the property, then you'll, you know, you'll have the money to do whatever. So, that's kind of what will happen from this point forward, depending on what motion they make and whether they decide that they are going to condemn it or not. Okay?
And I pay taxes on it every year.
Right. Well, after this year, it'll be more. It'll be more than whatever you've been normally paying. I don't know what it'll be. I mean, the house doesn't look real, real big, so I wouldn't imagine. But, you know, who knows nowadays? I would hate to guess what it would cost to tear it down. Okay, thank you, Ms. Dupre. And we do appreciate you being here. That says a lot that you showed up and you care enough at least to come down and speak to us. Thank you. Okay, so we're... Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gab.
Well, at this point, you have taken action, so there's nothing more to do. You can go on to the next item unless somebody wants to revisit it with a motion to reconsider.
Okay. So, somebody would have to... Yeah, that was on the prevailing side.
To reconsider, yes.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you can move on to the next item.
I don't see anybody that changed their mind, so, okay, we'll move on. Yes. Okay. Yeah, that was... Okay.
Ms. Landry?
I'm going to go ahead and let him speak. I'm... Mr. Barris?
Can we direct her, like, maybe if she needs to talk to staff before?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. To, yeah, to get some more information. Where is she? Ms. Dupre? If you would, is Mr. Robinson here? Mr. Robinson, would you get with her and get her some phone numbers where she can contact y'all and possibly get some advice on what she could do from this point moving forward? Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Robinson. Okay, we're gonna back up once again. I, I, I believe in letting people, they've come down here, let's let them speak. Uh, like Mr. Gab's already said, the action's been taken. It, it's condemned, it's done, but maybe you hear something that changes your mind. We have Christina Bear. At... Well, this says it's 1A. Now on our agenda, it's 547 Bozo Road and what, the blue sheet says 557.
547.
It's 557.
It's 557? Okay. If you would, state your name and address for the record.
Christina Bear, 557 Bozo Road, Moss Bluff, Louisiana, 70611.
Okay, and I don't know, I, I'm, I'm assuming y'all came in after we started? So, just so you know, we've moved past this item and it's already been condemned. But we're gonna give you the opportunity to go ahead and speak.
Thank you.
And tell us why it shouldn't be condemned. And it's possible it could get undone, but probably not, but...
Okay, so...
Okay, but hold, hold on one second, let's clear, clarify this address issue. She's at 557 Bozo Road. That's what's on the sheet and that's what she says. Is this the address that's on our?
The official address of that property, is this on? The official address of the property is 547. On the trailer, there is a number on the trailer that says 557. But that trailer has been there for a long time, so I don't know if the number on the trailer is not correct. But the official number that we have as an address on the property is 547.
And that's where the tax bill goes.
The numbers are different.
The tax bill goes to 547.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay ma'am, go, go ahead.
Okay, so the reason the numbers are different is because the land is in my uncle's name. And that, one time that was my dad's father, my father who's passed away's trailer. And at that time, the address was 557 Bozo Road. Since then, my dad has passed away and land has been given to my uncle, so now it, I guess, become 547 Bozo Road.
Okay, so their dress changed. And, uh, do we have that 1A is up on the screen for everybody, I'm assuming it is, okay. Okay, so you have the floor, if you would, just speak to the jury and tell them why it should not be condemned.
The reason I think it shouldn't be condemned is first off, it said that it's a public health hazard and the public does not go in there. And my intentions are to repair it and rebuild it. This is the only thing that I have left of my father, who has passed away. And although it looks like it's unsalvageable to y'all, I am an architect and I am a carpenter, so I have the knowledge and I'm gonna do it all myself. It means a lot to me. It means a lot to me, so I have both of my father.
Uh, Mr. Burley?
Have you started actual work on it?
No, because I had a notice on my door that said that I was not allowed to be in there unless I was in there cleaning out or if I was to do repairs, I had to have a permit.
But that's only been there for what, 30 days probably?
I'm sorry?
The notice on the door.
Oh, it's...
When was that posted?
It's been there probably longer than that, I'm not sure.
March. Around March.
Two to three months.
Okay. Have you contacted anybody up here since then, since that notice was put?
No, sir. It didn't say to contact anybody.
Ma'am?
It didn't say to contact anybody. I, you know, I was gonna get my permit and draw my blueprints and everything and come up here with that, so, um...
Do you have prints and...
I haven't drawn them yet, but I'm very capable of it.
Okay.
If you want some, I can get them to you.
Okay, Mr. Barris, you were next, are you okay, sir?
I'm good.
Okay, we have Mr. Gilery.
Uh, yes, I do, if I'm right, to repair a trailer, isn't it a little bit different? You have to go through the state and everything to repair a trailer, to file for the state and...
Yes, sir, Mr. Gilery.
Fire marshal.
So, yeah, the fire marshal. Uh, so, you know, a mobile home, manufactured homes are approved through the fire marshal's office, through the state. Uh, because the, they're designed to meet HUD standards, not the International Residential Code. So, the police jury doesn't really review the plans for a manufactured home. That has to go through the state. And any structural part of that, or any changes, or anything like that, you gotta get state fire marshal approval. And, and so, you know, normally a manufactured home, they're chattel, they're like a car, you know? So at, at some point, they lose their value. And, you know, they're not, they're not worth it.
Well, for me, it has a sentimental value, it's way more than the value, the monetary value.
Okay, hold, hold on, you don't have the floor right now, ma'am.
Thank you.
Are you finished, Mr. Gilery? Alright, thank you, Mr. Richard.
Yeah, are, are you the owner of the pa, who is Robert Young, is that your...
He's my uncle, that, uh, is property it says on.
Is he here?
No. He didn't, he, he's had a stroke and he didn't know, it didn't say he had to be here.
He, he shows he's the owner of that property.
I mean, I, there's, I definitely have permission for that to be on there, he doesn't want it gone. He didn't know he had to be here, he's the one that showed me, he was hand-delivered a notice. See, the first notice was posted on the door, the hand-delivered notice about the jury meeting was hand-delivered to him. Um, and that's how I even knew to be up here. Um, he's had a stroke and he can't drive and I didn't read anywhere in there that it said that he had to be here.
He would be the one to speak in this matter. Are you back, Mr. President? Keep my motion.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Mr. Richard. Uh, Mr. Barris?
Thank you. You're an architect?
Yes. I have drafting, two drafting degrees, one from Delta and one from Coala.
So you got, I mean, you got the...
I mean...
Hang tight. So you got the sense to do that?
Yes, sir.
If I get a note like that in my mailbox, I can infer, uh, or deduce, or whatever frickin' big words you wanna use, and man, I need to call somebody. Not yet. I, that's a pretty serious deal, it's been since March and you're like, man, maybe I should call somebody. Now, now you're here at the 11th hour and, and you want us to, to let you keep this health hazard there. I get the sentimental value part about it, but...
How is it a health hazard?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. How is it a health hazard? And second off, I didn't say I was an employed architect, I just said I had two drafting degrees.
Come on.
Come on, what?
You, you went to college, you, you have the sense enough to, to get through college. I, I mean, I just don't, why did you wait this long?
Cause I have a lot of mental problems. I lost my daughter, my brother, my father, my stepmother, real close together, so...
I understand. Mr. Landry?
Alright, thank you, Mr. Barris. Okay, is there any other discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Hayes? Am I to understand it's vacant right now? The trailer?
Yes, there's nobody living in it.
Nobody's living in it?
Yes, sir.
Since when?
Since, um, before the storm.
So, two? Three years?
Over three.
Thank you. Okay, um, is there any further discussion? Everybody's good? No other motions, no? Okay. So ma'am, the motion's already been made, the property's been condemned. And believe me, we all feel for you and the situation you're in. Unfortunately, it has been condemned. And it needs to be removed within 30 days. If that doesn't happen, then, you know, I don't know if you heard that before, but...
I'll remove it.
It goes out to bid and, and what have you. Uh, you, you do have that option of doing that yourself?
Thank you.
Uh, you'll need to get with the planning department, they need a permit also to tear it down, correct, Mr. Crane?
That's correct.
I'm not tearing it down, I'm gonna remove it.
No matter what happens, if you decide to do it yourself, you're gonna have to get a permit.
To remove it?
Yes.
Okay. Where do I get that permit at?
You're gonna move it?
I'm gonna move it, sir.
Yeah, I think, you gotta have a permit to move it.
I'm sorry?
She's thinking she's gonna move the mobile home.
It would have to be moved out of the parish.
Right. But she needs a permit to move it, correct?
Out of the parish.
Right, right.
I got purpose.
Well, right, cause if it goes to another, I mean, it's still in the same condition, so she would have the same issue at the next... So yeah, if it's outside of Calcasieu Parish, maybe somewhere that does not have, uh, you know, zoning regulations and what have you, then it might, that might be an answer for you. That might help you. Alright, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I do not remember what number we own, I apologize.
1H.
And do we have any more, do we have more blue cards, Mr. Crane?
Yes.
But all of them? Okay, we're on 1H, 6017 Adele Street in Lake Charles.
Move on 1G.
Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1H, 6017 Adele Street in Lake Charles? Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Staley, a second by Mr. Markantel to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections, hearing none, motion carries. 1I, 150 First Street in Starks.
Move on.
Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1I, 150 First Street in Starks? I have a motion by Mr. Markantel, second by Mr. Burley to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1J, 141 Second Street in Starks. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1J, 141 Second Street in Starks? Got a motion by Mr. Markantel, second by Mr. Andrew Pott, to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Are we now up to date on our pictures, okay? 1K.
Move on 1K.
1, 152 Second Street in Starks. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1K, 152 Second Street in Starks? Got a motion by Mr. Markantel, second by Mr. Richard, to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1L, 156 Third Street in Starks. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1L? And there is. Ms. Donna Weiss. 1L, 156 Third Street. Have someone here by the name of Donna Weiss. If you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Donna Weiss. And you need what?
And your, and your address, please, for the record.
303 Big Woods Vinton Road, Vinton, Louisiana.
Okay. You have the floor, ma'am, if you would, tell the jury why the structure should not be condemned.
It's my family home. It was built with insurance money from my dad passing in 1952. The only outside damage to that house is one corner in the kitchen. And then one bathroom has a soft spot. The floors in that house are just as sturdy as they were when I was a child there. That's a mess from someone breaking in and decided they were gonna live there rent-free.
Oh, there is a weak spot that is in the northwest corner where the kitchen is. But they decided that they would like to break in that area, so that part of, the back part of the house, they've removed boards and climbed in underneath the kitchen sink to get into the house.
Okay, Mr. Markantel? Yes, ma'am, I'm your police juror over there, I wished you to come to me before tonight. Question I have is, why have you waited three years to come forward with this without contacting somebody?
My brother died in 2020 and my husband died in 2021. My husband of COVID. I myself was recovering from COVID. And just the shock of losing him, I'm just now getting back to what I hope is a normal life. Um, I know that's a poor excuse.
You think this home can be repaired?
Yes.
With the damage that I've seen there, you, you really think that you can...
The only thing that concerns me, to tell you the truth, is it's on piers and it doesn't appear to be on piers. So that means that somewhere along the rain and stuff, the weight of the house has pushed, I don't know what they're called, cinder blocks? Not cinder blocks, there were forms that houses sit on. And so the house is very low to the ground now.
Mr. Robinson, did you, did you inspect this house? Okay. I'd like... Mr. Robinson, please come to the podium, state your name and position with the parish, sir.
David Robinson, I'm with the parish planning and development office.
Okay, uh, we, we can hear. What do you think the situation is on, on repairing this home?
Well, I'm, I'm not a building inspector, but I've been doing this a long time.
Right.
And, uh, the, the, the structure is in dire, uh, straits here. I mean, you know, I think any, in my opinion, you know, with building materials and everything as high as they were now, I think she would be throwing good money after bad. That's why we recommend it to be condemned, because it's not cost prohibitive to, you know, to fix it. I mean, it depends on what kind of money they wanna spend on this, but, you know, it, it, it would be expensive.
Are you satisfied with that, sir? Alright, thank you, Mr. Robinson. Uh, Mr. Staley?
The question I have, is your intent to move into this home? What, what are, what are, what are your intentions for the home?
To refix it and maybe one of my children move into it.
Do you, do you have the funds to bring this house up to code?
I have not even had a bid on it. Someone broke in and took all the electrical out of it, and I'm sure that that's what you say.
Yeah, with a throwing the good money after bad deal, I think is more your opinion than ours is.
No, mine is sentimental and I'll admit it.
I know that, I understand and I, believe me, but do you have the funds to do this house, what you wanna do with the house, when needs to be done?
I would have to see the bids first. And I'm sorry for not giving you a direct answer.
That, that's fine, it's, the, the problem here with the foundation, if, if everything is sunken, like you say it is, that house more than likely is not salvageable. If it's already, all the seals are broken and just from my past experience, that house to repair is in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. I would think. I mean, by now, and I know what you've been through, but by now, you should've gotten bids so you could bring it here and say, "Look, I've got a bid to repair it and I'm, this is my intention, I'm gonna repair it." But the way it is right there, honestly, I, I...
I'm sorry, this is a new experience for me.
But I don't think this house can be repaired. I mean, it's your money, not ours, but I really don't think it can be repaired.
Well, I thank you for your opinion, I do.
You're welcome. I'm done.
You finished, Mr. Staley, thank you. Uh, okay, is there any other jurors that wish to speak? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, uh, I don't think we have a motion, do we, Mr. Brain?
Yes.
Second.
So we, thank you, Ms. Kathy. I'm glad you paying attention. It was Mr. Markantel had the motion and who had the second?
Mr. Barris.
Mr. Barris? Hey, you got, you were 50% right. And that was, the motion was to condemn and remove within 30 days? Okay, is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1M, 148 Third Street in Starks. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on 1M, 148 Third Street in Starks? Move to condemn.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Markantel and a second by Mr., uh, Andrew Pott, I'm sorry, uh, to condemn and remove in 30 days. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 1N, 4989 Shelton Road in Vinton.
Move to condemn.
Second.
Okay, we have a speaker here. Uh, I'm not sure. Ms. Kayla Dubois? If you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please. If you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kayla Dubois. I'm currently residing at twenty-six oh seven Agnes Lane in Sulphur, seven oh six six five.
Thank you, Ms. Dubois. If you would, please tell the jury why you believe that the structure should not be condemned, and also, you know, what your, what your plan is for the, for the structure.
Um, my plan is for this, well, this house and this property's been in my family for years. It hasn't been, it hasn't been lived in since last year, whenever I lost my brother, he was living there. After he passed away, after he passed away, um, I'm sorry.
It's okay, ma'am, take your time.
Oh, God, where was I? After he passed away, I tried, and that's, I'm trying, I'm still trying. I tried to move on to the property in my camper. I ran into some issues with the, um, I haven't wrote down, Kayla read it. Um, I ran into some issues with the permit department because I wanted to, I want to move on to the property in my camper. I've had people break into it because I've secured it multiple times. It's secured again, too. I have a contractor that has looked at it, and the flooring needs to be redone. And I, I want to try and repair it because my grandparents, my grandpa, my great-grandpa, built it. If I can't repair it, there's lumber in it that I want to get, to get out of it to put into a new home that I wanna build there. At this time, I don't have the funds to do it. I have a pro, piece of property for sale in Moss Bluff. Once I get that sold, I will have the funds to either rebuild or take it down, whichever. If it can't be brought up to code, I'm gonna have to have it taken down, which brings more right there. Uh, the home itself isn't falling down. There's some shops that my dad had built. There's a house. Then there's the garage, and then there's some shops that daddy built. The shops is what's falling down. Those I can take down immediately. Whenever I was trying to do everything with the parish to get the permits, I ended up falling sick, having to have major surgery. I was out for six, seven months. And that's when all of this happened, and yes, it definitely needs to, I have my, I have someone cutting the grass, but not weed eating. I have a weed eater now. I've been, I wish I was four people. I work four days a week. And I've been, I have the double wide that I have for sale in Moss Bluff. I've been working to clean that out at, by myself, because my ex-husband was of no use there.
Okay, ma'am, just try to keep, try to keep it on the condemnation.
I know, I'm sorry. But I do have that completed, thank God. And I will concentrate on getting this property cleaned up. And I'd like to get in there and clean that house out. Cause there are some antique furniture that I want out of there that I'm keeping in there right now for storage. Like I said, I have the house secured, I went and put the, the front door is secured. I have, like, four-inch screws in it, they can't get through that. Um, they had broken a front window.
Okay, hold, hold, hold on a second, Ms. Dubois.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're kinda, we're kinda getting off track a little bit. Uh, we may have some questions for you from the jurors. Mr. Barris?
I don't know what else to say, so.
Thank you. It seems like you've got some traction, you know, with your other place, and then you've got, you've, you've had more of a plan than, than some of our other folks.
I've been trying.
If, if, um,
I'm trying.
If, if I can give you an extension, and we see some progress within the next thirty days, what, what would that need to look like, Wes?
So, in, in these situations where we posted a structure unsafe, um, they, they really need to submit a list of repairs to us, and, and that's sort of an inclusive thing. Uh, cause we've, we've looked at the structure, it's, it's fallen in disrepair. We don't know, there could be electrical issues, we don't know, there could be some other plumbing issues. This house has been there a long time, been vacant. And, um, so it's, it's not in good shape. So we, we would have to have a list of repairs from a contractor, licensed contractor. And, um, I think at that point, obviously, they would probably provide some sort of cost to that. And, um, you know.
So, Ms. Dubois, do you, do you think, thank you, sir, do you think that you could get that in thirty days?
List of repairs?
From a contractor, licensed contractor. Which will also show you what you're up against financially. And look, the good thing about it, there's, it's not all bad if you have to tear it down. Like you said, that house is built solid, and that wood is worth something, and it is worth keeping. So you will always have that.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not, you know, don't, it's not just a total, uh.
That's my only, um.
I get it. I get it. But you don't wanna, you know, like we say, throw money, just throw money at something that doesn't make sense.
I said something to one of my friends, and she's like, you ever seen the movie Money Pit? Like, yes.
So, Wes, can we give her an extension for thirty days? I'd like to rescind my motion to condemn, and then I would like to make a motion to, uh.
You never really said what the motion was, you just moved, and I got a second, and I didn't.
I moved to condemn.
Okay, I didn't hear that part.
So, like, therefore, I rescind that motion.
Okay, it's rescinded, sir.
And I make a motion that we give her an extension, or defer it for thirty days. And then that, at that time, and look, these folks, Mr. Robinson, they'll work with you if you work with them. Okay?
I didn't get a first notice. Probably because the people who were around the house.
Sure. So, let's just, let's just, is, is that a good plan for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion now on the floor by Mr. Barris to defer for thirty days, and a second by Mr. Markantel. Is that good, Mr. Markantel? Okay, is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Ms. Dubois, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
One O, nineteen fifty-five White Oak Street in Vinton. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak on one O, nineteen fifty-five White Oak Street in Vinton? I need a motion.
Motion to condemn.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Andrew Ponte to condemn and remove in thirty days. Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank y'all, that is one of the worst things that we have to do down here, you know, but it's, it's part of the job. But not pleasant. Four A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting, the police jury dated July sixth, twenty twenty-three. Got a motion by Mr. Burley, second by Mr. Barti. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Four B, adopt the resolution calling a special election on Saturday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three to renew levy and collect an existing two-point-four-one-mills special tax for the purpose of maintaining and operating the facilities and services of the Calqueshoe Parish Mosquito Control Program. Got a motion by Mr. Geary, second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Four C, adopt the resolution calling a special election on Saturday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three to renew levy and collect an existing three-point-one-six-mills special tax for the purpose of operating, maintaining, and improving the facilities and services of the District Attorney and District Court of the Fourteenth Judicial District. I have a motion by Mr. Barris, second by Mr. Markantel. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Four D, adopt the resolution calling a special election on Saturday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three to renew levy and collect a point-six-three-mill special tax for the purpose of operating, maintaining, and improving the facilities of the Lake Charles Regional Airport. I got a motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, it has been my pleasure for the last three and a half years, and Mr. Brain's longer than that to serve as liaison to the regional airport for the police jury. Uh, this is a very important tax coming up. We think that it's important enough to warrant special attention by us here at the police jury, as well as the voters. I take it upon myself to invite Heath Allen here tonight. He is the director of Lake Charles Regional Airport, and I will ask Mr. Allen to come forward to make some comments, particularly if you have any questions for him regarding this election. And secondly, it's important enough to, uh, warrant some of our time just to hear what he's up to. So come on up here, Mr. Allen, if you would, please.
Mr. Allen, state your name and address for the record, please, it can be a work address.
Thanks, sir. Heath Allen, uh, sixty-four nineteen White Oak Lander, Circle East, Lake Charles, Louisiana, seven oh six oh five. And thank you, Mrs. Hayes, thank you, President Landry, and members of the jury. Obviously, we, we appreciate your consideration in this motion, as Mr. Hayes said, extremely important, uh, renewal for our tax. Ten-year tax, originally, originally approved in nineteen fifty-five, so it's been around a while. Uh, it's a point-six-three tax, currently levied at point-five-nine. First year is projected to, uh, to, um, generate a little over a million dollars. So, uh, what does that mean in terms to the, to the taxpayer for a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house? Uh, it's about a dollar fifty a month, so, uh, this is actually the smallest, not the smallest levy in the parish, but one of the smallest, uh, the smallest for any single entity. Um, and it makes up about, believe it or not, we are, we run a very lean, lean ship out at, out at regional airports. So, uh, we have a very small budget, uh, for, for a commercial airport. Often get asked about Lafayette, and we often get compared to Lafayette, and even, even Alexandria. And, and we talk about budgets and things like that. So, normal year, we're around three million dollars a year for operations, this doesn't count, and cap, doesn't count capital improvements. Uh, Lafayette's probably up somewhere around ten million dollars. Uh, Alexandria's up around ten, twelve million dollars a, a year, so that's what we're operating our regional airport on. So, uh, but that's not something I'm, I'm up here complaining about or anything. I, you know, I, I think it's, it's a feather in our cap that we're very lean, we're very efficient. Uh, I like to say we're lean, we're leaning means, so the little, the little airport that could, uh, and we certainly are. But what that means to, uh, to Calqueshoe Parish, um, in terms of economic impact, almost two thousand jobs, one thousand nine hundred and eighty-three jobs, uh, payroll of seventy-two million dollars, and an economic, an economic output on an annual basis of over three hundred million dollars, three hundred and eleven to be exact. So, uh, if we do some simple math, I'm not real good at math, so I'd do this ahead of time, so, but it is very round numbers, so that makes it a little bit easier. If we take that three hundred million dollars divided by this million-dollar tax, that's about three hundred and six dollars to, uh, for every one dollar of local tax that we put into the airport. I will certainly take those, uh, take those returns any day of the week. So, uh, again, real quickly, something people don't really realize out at the airport, I mentioned that this tax generates about, uh, it, it accounts for about twenty to thirty percent of our annual budget. So if we, we break that down into a couple of components that are, uh, easy to recognize. So we're required to have police out at the airport, since we're a commercial airport. So we contract to the Calqueshoe Parish Sheriff's Department, uh, so they do a, a phenomenal job for us. So, take that, take our property insurance and our fire department, which we're also required to have because we're a commercial airport. That pretty much takes up that, that, and then some, takes up that, that, um, that local tax. So, the rest of the revenue that we generate is actually from our business activities. And we all very much, uh, operate like a business out there, uh, where we generate, we've got thirty-one tenants. A lot of people don't realize we have thirty-one tenants out at the airport, uh, almost nineteen hundred acres, so, and that's what we really leverage to try to generate those, those different funds through leases and fees and different things like that. So again, we appreciate your consideration, I'm glad to answer any questions about the airport.
Got any questions from the jury? Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Four E, adopt the resolution calling a special election on Saturday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three as the governing authority of Water Works District Number Five, Avails Three and Eight, to renew levy and collect six-point-three-nine-mills special tax for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving, maintaining, or operating waterworks facility within said district. Got a motion by Mr. Markantel, a second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Four F, adopt the resolution calling a special election on Saturday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three to renew levy and collect one percent sales and use tax in Sales Tax District Number One to be dedicated and used for acquiring, constructing, improving, maintaining, and draining public roads, highways, bridges, and parks. Have a motion by Mr. Markantel, a second by Mr. Rishard. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Four G, adopt the ordinance approving the relocation of polling locations and the consolidation of voting precincts as follows. Number one, relocate precinct number seven hundred to Vinton City Hall. Number two, relocate precinct number seven oh one to Vinton City Hall. Number three, consolidate precinct three oh nine E with precinct three oh nine W. Number four, consolidate precinct three thirteen E with precinct three thirteen W. Number five, consolidate precinct three sixteen E with precinct three seventeen. Number six, consolidate precinct, uh, precinct three sixteen W with precinct three seventeen. Number seven, consolidate precinct three nineteen N with precinct three nineteen S. And eight, consolidate precinct seven oh one with precinct seven hundred. I would assume that's on our website, Mr. Beam?
Yes, all of these, uh, Mr. President, when we have precinct changes, we have requirements by, that we have to basically let everybody know, and we go above and beyond that, so yes.
I think they get mailed also a notice, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Reading it, it sounded confusing. Got a motion by Mr. Geary, second by Mr. Brain. Is there any discussion? Any objections? On, yeah, all bullies. Hearing none, motion carries. Four H, adopt the resolution approving Recreation District Number One, Avail Three, to proceed with development of a project involving issuance of limited tax bonds. Had a motion by Mr. Barti, second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Four I, adopt the resolution approving the industrial tax exemption application for Low-Take Chemical Louisiana for the company's lean-cycle water loop to be located at twenty-two hundred Bayou Den Pass in Westlake. I have a motion by Mr. Tremonti, a second by Mr. Stelly. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Five A, adopt an ordinance condemning and authorizing the demolition and removal of one manufactured home located at fifty-one sixty-eight L.A. Little Road in Carlos. We have a speaker on five A, Mr. Charles Myers. If you would, Mr. Myers, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Charles Myers, I live at fifty-one sixty-eight L.A. Little Road.
All right, Mr. Myers, if you could, tell the jury, uh, state your case of why it's, the structure should not be condemned.
Well, right now, I'm going through a divorce, me and my wife, and she was staying at the trailer. And y'all can see what the trailer looked like. And I done did a little bit of repair. and y'all can see what the trailer looked like, and I done, did a little bit of repairs on it already, but I didn't know I had to have a permit on it to do my own repairs, and I got changed the glass out the windows, and already sobbed the graffiti on the side of the trailer, I done painted it, and all that other stuff, and I don't know where that comes at. But, and right now, like, you know, I'm just asking for an extension so I can finish my own repairs to my trailer. I just don't want to lose my home. If I lose it, I'm home in the streets. And there's nothing wrong with my electricity, I just had a, they cut it off for me and everything, so all I gotta do is call them back up, and they'll cut it right back on.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Myers, do we have, uh, Mr. Andrew Ponte?
Do, do we have any current pictures of the structure?
Mr. Robinson, or Mr. Crane?
Yeah, this is it, these are the current pictures.
Those are current, okay. Okay, do we have any other qu- Mr. Barris?
Charles, you didn't have to tell anybody y'all was going through the divorce, everybody knows. I get so many calls about that.
Right.
It ain't just the house, and, and you've been, you've had conversations about that, the house. Uh, we've, we've had our folks go out there and visit. I mean, how much more time do you need?
I just need an extension, whatever y'all can give me. All I gotta left to do is do the glass for the windows, put new glass in it, that's it.
Is that, is that even, is the structure even usable?
I have that, all that stuff right there, ready to be repaired.
If, if the glass is redone?
That, everything, I have the stuff to go for the front right there for my windows, the bay windows, everything, I got it all.
And you can get, and you can get it...
Unless, less than thirty days.
And then everything you don't need to do the fixing, it needs to go to dump?
That's, I'm doing that in the process right now.
Cause that's another thing we're, we're here for.
The, right there in the front of the trailer, um, that's almost completely removed, all that. I done cleaned up the yard already, that right there, that don't even look like that no more.
I'll give him a, I'll give him a fifteen-day extension.
Hey, I, I'll take that if y'all can.
Move to the foot. That's the next meeting. You lucked out, bud.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll thank y'all.
What is that? We'll defer to August 24th?
August 24th.
Now, I need you to be in touch with these folks.
I called him, uh, the other day and talked to him, uh, Mr. Bruce, or I talked to, or something like that.
I'mma, I'm gonna check back on all that, so, but I need you to, y'all gonna become friends.
Okay, I talked to Mr. Bruce, or...
Okay.
And everything, and I tried to call him Friday.
And, and, cause I don't want no more calls about this joint.
Y'all got it, I'm fixing to have that all done.
Okay, man.
It's almost complete. On the 24th, August 24th.
Thank you, Mr. Barris, we still have some more discussion, Mr. Stelly.
You are aware of the public dump sites that we have, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I got, uh, the parish ones got one, and everything else. Yeah, right down the road.
Okay. Do we have a motion, Mr. Brain? We have a motion to defer until our next meeting, which is August the 24th.
That's my dad's birthday.
And we had a second by Mr. Markantel.
Oh, yeah.
We did. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, we're gonna go to 6A, approve payment of all current invoices.
Move on 6A.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Stelly, is that where that came from? And a second by Mr. Burley. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6B, adopt the resolution on bids for the Serra Street Bridge Replacement Project.
The move.
Staff recommends a bid of Gwynn Construction LLC in the amount of $1,396,708.50 be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Andrew Ponte, second by Mr. Abshar. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6C, adopt the resolution on bids for the select major thoroughfare roads and drainage rehabilitation. Staff recommends a bid of Ori High Construction Company LLC in the amount of $8,495,721.50 be accepted. Got a motion by Mr. Stelly, a second by Mr. Markantel. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6D, adopt the resolution accepting pile repair of various bridges as substantially complete. Got a motion by Mr. Barris, second by Mr. Abshar. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 6E, advertise for bids for these Cauquash Parish road and drainage rehabilitation. Got a motion by Mr. Stelly, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7A, Ward Four, Fire Protection District Number Four.
Move on 7A.
Uh, we got number one, Ms. Nancy Falk, uh, reappointment, and also the reappointment of Mr. Glenn King. Uh, motion by Mr. Burley, and a second by Mr. Andrew Ponte to reappoint, uh, number one and two?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. 7B, Water Works District Number Nine of Ward Four.
Move to reappoint Ms. Teresa Bell.
I have a motion by Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Markantel to reappoint Ms. Teresa Bell. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Move to reappoint Mr. Dalton Langford.
7C, West Cauquash Airport Authority. I got a motion to, by Mr. Andrew Ponte to reappoint Mr. Dalton Langford, and a second by Mr. Barris. Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Number eight is an advised item of a number of different board appointments.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. Stelly.
I have a question about, um, 8A.
Yes, sir.
How long can that be deferred? Can we have a replacement? For eternity. I need at least another sixty days. Just so I know, thank you.
That's it, Mr. Stelly?
That's it, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Okay, I hate to break this to you, but number nine.
Move on 9A.
9A, consideration of going into executive session to discuss Oakville Farms LLC versus Cauquash Parish Police Jury. We are, had a second by Mr. Abshar, and a, a motion by Abshar, and a second by Mr. Brain, we're now in executive session.